Thank you.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Ready, ready? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. It is Monday, September fourteenth, seven o'clock council meeting. Uh, we'll call.
Tom Marsley.
Oh, Andrew. Michelle Adams.
Kirby Winer.
Randy Hansen.
Daniel Alder.
Jared Bogdan.
Alright, happy happy. I have a little election year poem. Perhaps there is a balance and evening of an evening of the scales that rights the wrongs around us and blows wind into our sails. Perhaps we can see the future where pain and vision has run its course and memories that haunt us have all but lost their force. Part of it is letting go, but doesn't mean letting off the hook. Perhaps it's also looking back and giving another look. Forgiveness isn't for the guilty only, it's really for the pain, to break in the sunshine and to be cleansed by the rain. God of grace and glory, uh, send your safety and protection upon us this season. Protect our families, our friends, our neighbors, our enemies too. In this season of great, um, fear, anxiety, division, uh, health risks, keep us safe, draw us together in your unity and love. Amen. Thank you. Uh, President Major.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna add under, um, House table number three, pay request from both the main. It's for Rice Lake construction for the well over budget. Alright, is there approval to the agenda?
And will we approve the agenda?
House, have any in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any votes? Motion passes?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda to include the pay request number six for the Royal Hospital Bank.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? I just have a question under, I wasn't at the workshop, so, um, the Severn Avenue and Second Street discussion that was had about opening that street up, what exactly was that hearing?
Yeah, so the, the discussion was whether or not that street would be connected, um, through or not. That was the discussion.
What was council's thought? I mean, are we opening that up even though there was an incident like that?
I think we need to take advantage of the opportunity and open up the alley for a week.
What's the plan of what we've got though? Just following.
COVID notice was been requesting, I think it's opened up for a number of years because of following and, um, once we bought the salone property, it gave us access then to open that alley.
Hey, Kirby, I don't know how many of you have talked to. I went out to a couple doors Friday, nobody answered, just get their opinion on it, on what they thought about it, but don't leave any comments.
The two that are directly next to where the road go in, and then there's a old lane that's two houses down that also was not in favor of it. That was, that was before we ever even talked about it, they just brought that up when I was talking about it. They said, are they gonna open this road up as a lot? I'd take it to the plans, and they said, well, we don't want that. So it was unprovoked, they even brought it up, so. But I also know that the fire department, it would make it easier for emergency vehicles as well, is what I was told.
It's been pending the plans for a number of years and I know everybody responded it, but it just makes it so much easier for maintenance.
Well, there's a hassle that we know, I mean, do you think people will be parking along that street then during the holidays and stuff?
They do already.
Well, they can't, just use the night, they wouldn't.
I know, but they, they drive down that, that end road and they just park in front of their houses, which is one of the other complaints that people had that live there. But yeah, I mean, there's a lot of little kids that live on Dana there too and my fears, they're gonna treat it like First Street, once that happens, it'll be a through street and then people will just speed down there. But they, the GPS is already telling you that it's a through road, so they get a lot of traffic down that road anyway where people have to stop and turn around in driveways and orders back, back down the road. So that's, that's the neighbor's fears there is that they're gonna have traffic issues and people getting hurt and.
Any other thoughts on that? I think it should stay closed, but that is okay. Any other discussion? Alright, uh, we're in first and second, so, I'll have it direct.
Aye, aye.
Any votes? Motion passes, five, four, oh, sorry, four, over. Yep. Over for, we have none. Uh, Ray County is not here, uh, Scott.
If you guys have any questions, I can try it.
Anything? Alright, we're done. Uh, council.
I have the city council meeting, EDA, finance, uh, the council workshop, and the special city council meeting from last month.
I have city council, park rec, uh, I have county and federal states, and I didn't go to the workshop.
Uh, city council, county states, and workshop.
I have the city council, uh, special post meeting, budget meeting, Wendy. EDA meeting, finance committee meeting, city council workshop, and contract negotiations.
Karen.
Good evening, councilor mayor. Uh, I think put it in your back as the activity report. If you look at the activity report, we had an extremely busy month, um, and through the month we actually broke two records on our department. One being most calls in a twenty-four hour period, we had eight. Three record was seven back in the late eighties, early nineties where there was a string of grass fires. Um, and then the other record that we broke is total number of calls in a given month, so we had thirty-six. Ever since that been achieved and prior to that, we've never had over thirty, uh, months, so. It was a very busy month for us, um, I'd like to take a special, uh, second just to thank Waverly Fire. They stood by for us for twelve hours one day, um, we kinda had a little game together and, uh, that was much appreciated, especially with a busy month, so. Special shout out to them, and a special shout out to all firefighters for the busy month and, um, we were seeing more of each other than we were families for a while, so. Thanks to those people, so. Any questions on the activity report? Alright. Uh, next item on the agenda, um, I'm looking for authorization to move forward with the project um, for our engine twelve, we're gonna upgrade the radio, um, in there so that it has headsets, so the crew and the driver and the front seat passenger all will be wearing a headset. It's an intercom system and also a radio system, um, looking to get this done, um, on engine twelve, it's our first cab over engine, so we're sitting right on top of the engine and we're realizing that communication is difficult, if next to impossible, especially when I arrive on scene and I'm trying to give them information, they can't hear the radio or anything like that, so it's kind of a necessary upgrade that we identified with the fire department. Um, looking to do the project with ANCOM, they're a radio supplier, with a not-to-exceed price of ten thousand dollars.
I make a motion to approve up to ten thousand dollars to purchase the headsets for our engine twelve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Tom?
Aye.
Nicole? Of what I am, Kirby?
Yes.
Motion to pass the four zero.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the brush pile, so we got a conversation about the brush pile. Um, so I've talked with Wendy and Wayne and also the public works, um, guys. So we burned this back in July, um, and then in a blink of an eye, there was just as much, if not more, stuff back there. We didn't have a whole lot of storms to cause trees going down. There's not a whole lot of trees on a lot of property in the city of Montrose, so where all of that stuff came from, I'm not hundred percent sure. Uh, also within there, Wendy had passed around some pictures, is stuff that is too big for being in that brush pile. Problem with the stuff being too big is it will never go away, it'll sit there and smolder for years and years sometimes and then it'll just light up and then we have problems when the DNR may call us or we get woken up at four o'clock in the morning and then you have real two firefighters. Um, so we need to have a discussion about what we wanna do with the, um, brush pile. I can't be going out there once a month to burn the thing. Um, if, if that's the case, if that's the council wishes, then we're gonna have to start probably willing for time on fire department side, um, just because it's, it's an inconvenience and there's plenty of other work that needs to get done. I know in the past, the gate was locked, um, and you gotta go to state hall to get a key. Um, there were times where they opened it when they were here and they could kinda monitor things a little bit. Whatever the council's decision is and stuff, we have to really think about what we're gonna have to do with it. It can become a hassle and, um, we can't be burning it every month, I guess, so.
Did, did Wayne say he had pictures of the license plates of people who were drawing that large stuff out there?
So, I mean, the interesting thing about the, the license plates, um, it's great, find Danny to get license plates, but you have no way of tracking them out. Sheriff's office won't provide you with information like that, that's all private data. So if he gets those license plates and lets me know where the truck is, um, it's a headache. Um, sheriff's office has been nice enough to help us out with a few of them, um, especially those garbage type things, so if they dump any complaint, that's something totally different. But if they're just putting brush in the brush pile, it's not really a dumping complaint. Yeah, they're going against what the sign says and stuff, but I don't know if there's an ordinance and act that could. I don't know how that process would work, but it would be more cumbersome and more time consuming for staff and sheriff's office would probably also block that, I'm guessing as well. Um, cause they're very cautious about the private data stuff, so.
I know the sign says city residents only and one of the public works guys caught somebody out there, I think just last week, that lives on Highway thirty, so he's in the township, and said, you can't dump here and be, that's just, or bleep, 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 and was mad because we won't let him dump there, so it's not, I think a lot of it's coming from other than in the city.
So, did, we had this discussion, um, we can't burn anything more like we used to, right? The city, the city used to do it.
Yep, we can, but that's to be under my authorization, I'm the only person that can authorize a burning permit in the city. So, and when we burned it the last time, you thought it was so large and now it's large again, my condition, so I can set conditions on a burn permit is I have to be present with the lighting, somebody had to be present throughout the day to watch it, and then we were gonna watch it and then put it out at the end of the night if it was still going hot. So, again, you're looking at twelve plus hours of staff time, um, you know, your firefighters and staff. Um, and then you're also at mercy of the weather and everything like that, so. I know it's a big convenience to have it open all the time, but when things are getting, um, some used, you have to look at different options, I think.
We've done this before, we've locked it before and made them come and get keys, and it seems like after about six months of having to get keys, we can open it back up again and then it's pretty good for a while because people say, oh, I guess they're watching us. So, um, it might be something we need to do, we can just lock it up and they have to get a key. I know it's tough for people that work during the week and it's hard for them to get rid of it other than on weekends if they don't have anybody here, but I don't know what else to do, cause they're not, I mean, there's a big sign out there that says what we take and people are just ignoring it.
So when we did it before, we locked it, did we have it open at all during the day? Did they have to come, like, normal office hours? I don't remember that.
We've done it a couple different ways, we've had it where it's just been locked completely and they have to come to city hall and get a key. We've had times where we've got locked it during the day when we're around, but the problem is we don't have somebody down there all the time, so just so happens that if they're drawing it through, they might catch somebody. Um, we've done it where we've hired somebody to sit out there for so many hours, like, one night of the week and I'll get it every morning, but there again, now you're paying somebody to sit there to monitor it. So sometimes it just works to lock it up and you get a lot of angry people, but sometimes that's what it takes because then they go out on social media and say, gee, thanks for screwing it up for all of us. And it seems to work then again for a while, so I don't know if you wanna, what you wanna do with it.
I don't think it should be a twenty-four hour thing, I think it should, uh, during office hours and maybe a couple Saturdays a month, if there's somebody in town or an on-call person, they can open it up for three or four hours on Saturday.
Well, the on-call people are here two hours Saturday and two hours Sunday if they're not here.
Well, then I guess that would be the hours for when that place is open. Problem is, the on-call people won't come in at the exact same time, um, all the time. One JMA came in, come in at ten, the next week they may come in at noon, the next week they may come in at eight.
Someone come in at six in the morning.
So, to, to get that scheduled would be kind of a nightmare, so. I know that, uh, in the past, it was open for four hours every other Saturday, I think.
Yeah, I don't remember, it was, that's when we hired somebody to sit there.
Do you think Wayne could give us some data in terms of, you know, when the majority of the use is, a particular daytime where?
Yeah, we can check with him to see, I know it's cause he's got the camera, then he can look at them.
Yeah, that would be, I think we could make an intelligent decision on who wanna lock up and who wanna open it.
Yeah, we can ask him to.
Cause we gotta figure out something for the weekends, cause that's when, you know, mostly, especially now with fall cleaning out the leaves and.
Well, I, I would be okay with, um, fire department side, okay, if you might open it up for twenty-four hours one or two months out of the year, so once in the spring, once in the fall for cleanup times, that would make sense, but to have it open all year round when there has been no major storms are going through our area to cause that kind of brush to.
Well, and then from these pictures, it looks like it's like freshly cut with a, like a chainsaw, so. They just kinda dumped their tree.
Is any of that from the first street, tree that came down?
So, I'll, the public works guys do not dump their stuff there, is my understanding. They go down with the stuff they got down elsewhere.
Right, but we had a, a residence home where they had a large tree come down. And we, we did say that we would work with them and taking care of the tree, so I don't know if that's part of this? Because Wayne had talked to them.
I know if Wayne was working with them, he would have had them put the brush in the brush pile and any of the larger logs, he would have gotten to the other pile.
Yeah.
Alright, I guess we'll, we'll just check with Wayne and see when the peak periods are and decide if we're gonna keep it open.
I know it sucks, but can the public works guys maybe go clean up the big logs?
Yes.
Yeah, I know it sucks for them to have to do it now, but.
They also have to push a lot of it together because it's spread out all over, people just came in and just dumped.
Well, and they've been actually spreading it out too, so it's easier to clean it up, because that was also one of my conditions, we have to limit it to the two inch. It used to be four inch higher, but if we'll wait, we can get it smaller, if we burn firefighters, less time for us and it'll clean up better. Um, so that was kind of one of the conditions I was putting on it too, is, you know, two inches, so if you say two inches, you're still gonna get four inch stuff. Um, if you say four inches, we were getting eight inch stuff, very regularly.
And big trees.
And big trees, so, um, they're gonna have to clean all that up and stuff and I'll try to work with them here in the next couple of weeks to try and get it burnt again, but hopefully at the next council meeting, we can make a determination on what to do then, so. Anything else on that one? Okay, let's spend some money. Alright, so CARES Act funding, so this is gonna come up a couple of times here in the next few minutes. Um, I don't know how familiar you guys are with CARES funding, um, but CARES funding, this money has been allocated to the city through the federal government due to COVID nineteen. Uh, the city was awarded two hundred and forty-four thousand and some change. Uh, there's some very, um, not strict stipulations, but there's stipulations on how it can be used, so we can't use it to buy, um, certain things, but we can use it to buy certain other things, and it's gotta be approved or looked at by our auditor and then also our legal counsel, we're finding out. Um, so there's a little bit of red tape there, but rather than leave all this money on the table, um, we're gonna try and spend some of it here. So Wendy's got one that'll come up here, I got two that we're gonna talk about here shortly. So the first one is portable radio purchase, so we're gonna try to do this with the CARES Act funding. Um, if for some reason, when we get aud, when, if we get audited, um, through process, this could be years down the road, from my understanding. Um, the money's there, it's just not allocated for that project. Um, and that money can be spent and utilized elsewhere very appropriately as well. Um, so it's a three-pronged test to see if CARES Act funding can be used. It's a necessary expenditure incurred due to the public health emergency. So portable radios, communication is an essential item in the emergency management world. We need to communicate as fire department and we activated AOC because of an outbreak here. I'm gonna have to leave one or two radios here or we're going to deal with other things. Um, so this is gonna increase the number of radios that we have and also replace the majority of our older radios, which are no longer serviceable. So if one of those breaks down, basically I just have to throw it in the trash. Nobody will fix it or repair it, they can't even parts anymore. So I'm looking for authorization at this point to, uh, move forward with portable radio, um, purchase project, um, with CARES funding money. Um, the first quote that I got, and there's some stuff that I've already found that are missing from the quote, so it'll probably go up, so I'm looking for, so the first quote I got was fifty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and four quid cents. Um, so I'm looking for a not-to-exceed value of seventy-five thousand dollars. And I've been working very closely with Wendy and, um, other staff, trying to rack our brains of what we're gonna spend this money on, and it's, it's harder than one might think to actually get it. The other things that you have to, the other parts of the, uh, things that you have to meet is asked not be budgeted for in your current budget cycle, uh, starting March twenty-seventh, and then the project must be completed by November fifteenth. So Wendy and I have been working at this for the last month or so. Um, it's been taking up way too much of my time, but we don't wanna leave that money on the table either, so we're kinda giving some of these projects going very quickly. Um, I may have another project for next month as well to try and spend out a little bit more, so.
How many radios does it represent?
Uh, fifty-eight thousand, uh, fourteen, plus accessories and, um, things like that. So then what we'll do is we're, we're gonna keep all of our old radios as well, we're gonna take some of those old radios and those will be the additions to our fleet, and then we'll have some spares sitting around too that wouldn't be on our system anymore. So if one of those old ones break, I can reactivate one of the old ones that's just been sitting there collecting dust and we're good to go. Um, so by the time we're all said and done, we're looking at having, um, about twenty-four portable radios, so we have a couple of spares, um, in the event of a larger scale emergency.
Is this, did I include like a support contract or anything like that?
Uh, not really, um, so, support contracts wouldn't be authorized through CARES anyways. Um, but ANCOM is very good with us, this is coming, however, we did get the extended three-year warranty on, so we get a total five-year warranty on radios. And when I have problems with radios, they're very easily fixed, ANCOM is great to work with. Um, and surprisingly, when I sent one in to get fixed, it's actually very cheap here, even if it's not covered. Um, I just have to name it, or say, oh, might as well just buy a new radio and come back, whoa, hundred bucks, okay. Um, there is a yearly fee that we pay to accommodate every year for each radio that you have on the system, including the ones that are in our trucks, um, that have a hard moment, but that's like a hundred or a hundred and five dollars a year and that's budgeted for every year, so that doesn't apply for CARES ones either.
I'll make a motion to approve the spending of not-to-exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for portable radios using the CARES Act funding.
I'll second that.
Alright, uh, I, Nicole, I, Kirby?
Yes.
Aye.
Motion passes, four zero.
Uh, last thing on my part here is authorized purchase of new Nomex fire hoods, so they're not really Nomex anymore. Um, so the clothes that we put on our head basically protect our ears and any skin on the face that our mask doesn't cover. Um, these new ones are carcinogen blocking hoods, so it's a cancer preventing type material that is supposed to keep us safe for, I guess. Um, but they found through testing and hence the, it's the recommendation out that fire departments go for that to try and prevent a cancer spread from the fire service. Um, the cost of these hoods are about a hundred and twenty bucks a hood. Um, more, the reason why I'm bringing this today is we're starting to run low on our current supply of hoods, so I'm looking to just get these out to all the guys so that they're better protected and safer. And we also need ordering a few extras to keep my hand, cause this is kind of like a consumable item that after a few years, when it gets so dirty, we just have to get rid of it, issue of any of those, so. Looking for a not-to-exceed cost of four thousand dollars on that one.
This would care that too, Kevin, or no?
No, this would not, because it has nothing to do with COVID unless COVID can somehow start fires at some point.
Is that everything else?
Yeah, just waiting.
We'll wait for the verdict.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to authorize the purchase of thirty new fire hoods, not-to-exceed four thousand dollars.
I'll second that. Alright, uh, Kirby?
Yes.
Uh, Tom?
Yes.
I, motion passes, four zero.
Alright, emergency management for money. Um, so again, we're, we're talking CARES Act funding here, um, so, uh, Wendy and I met with a couple of companies who came to look at our audio setup and also talked about some video, uh, trace the community center. Were able to do this and this is why we brought up emergency management is because this is our primary emergency operation center should something happen. Also, this call question of the CARES Act, because we're looking at doing lapel wireless mics, there are four people kinds for outdoor, um, and we would be adhering to social distancing. You have to be kind of clever with the CARES Act and stuff, but we're, we're doing a pretty good job with it. And looking at some of the other cities proposals and stuff, they're doing everything similar. We're, we're not like creating stuff out of the blue, so. Um, we were actually approached by our auditor that, you guys should do this like as soon as the CARES money dropped essentially, so. Um, this came out from a strong recommendation from Brett, um, our auditor, from the audit team, so. Um, what it's looking like right now, so a whole new audio system for the most part, additional speakers in the drop ceiling, um, a mounted TV on that wall if we're ever thinking it'd be seventy-five inches or it's four down the court right now, um, a mounted camera system and then some kind of control box thing over by where the TV is. If you'd be able to connect wirelessly to the TV, so if I'm sitting here with my phone, I got a monitor, you guys something, I can just connect it. There it is. Um, it would be a great addition as this is our emergency operations center, fire department be able to utilize it, be able to possibly rent it out, system and stuff, for when it's, uh, it's basically being rented by private persons. Um, and then the audio system would have a couple of wireless mics, uh, I think one or two is what we have, and then, uh, lapel mics for council, mayor, staff, and contractors. So, um, the cost that we started out with is at thirty-three thousand. Um, but on that quote, the camera system was not on there, so we're trying to get him to add that. Believe it or not, this company is very busy right now, um, because there's a lot of cities in our organizations that are doing this, um, because of the CARES Act. um, because of the CARES Act funding. So he's gonna hopefully get me the final one. So we're looking for a not-to-exceed cost of forty thousand dollars on this project. So if, we did talk to a couple of different companies, this is the only one that basically said, yeah, we'll work with you. So the other one said, we don't have the time, sorry. Basically Wendy and I are kind of thinking that we're too small a project for them to make it worth their while. So we've done work with EPA in the past and that's the company that we're looking for with.
You would replace all of this stuff over here. We would no longer record on CDs, which is, or whatever they are. That's ancient history now. Um, and we'd also have a better visual, um, camera. So when we put it out on the website, we'd actually be able to see you guys and hear us.
Yeah, as long as people can see and hear because the audio quality is awful.
Well, and with no mic, with no speakers on the outside, like those guys back there, I don't know if they can hear us very easily, you know? It'll just be, it's, the echo's so bad underneath here too, so we're, we're looking at some of that stuff.
Yeah, Kevin, did you talk to them at all about any sound that you?
So that would be a tough one to get the CARES funding for. Um, so the great thing with fire department is I have twenty-one individuals with twenty-one different skill sets. I have a ceiling guy on our department who works for it. I had him on board and look at the space. Uh, he said he'd basically be willing to do it, um, even though he makes some costs on the tiling that go up there. Um, basically it's doing that kind of tiling in various locations. It's not that exact type of tile, but it's a sound absorbing type of tiling. It's glued up there. And also doing something with the ceiling just to re-coat it there.
I think what we do is take this, this popcorn down and put like the knockdown on it because it's getting called the back. Building was built in nineteen ninety-five, so it's, it's starting to crack and stuff. So, um, we'd probably take this layer off and have them spray the ceiling and put up some stuff. But there's money in the community center fund itself to do that.
Yeah, I understand some part of the CARES Act deal, but I think we need to pursue that to improve some point.
Or I mean, and there's other options that we can discuss, um, staff and council life. Maybe it's just time to drop the ceiling down and not have this, you know, it used to be, it was this way because everybody's had parties in here and stuff like that. It's not really utilized as much for that anymore. Um, and maybe that's a better option. We have to actually look at it and figure out what's gonna cost us and all that fun time, so.
It's not gonna be cheap.
No, I'd assume that it's gonna probably be used for parties again soon when the.
It's starting to rent again.
Well, especially with the, you know, the, they average age is around thirty or so. So, you know, another five, ten years when all those kids start to get to graduating age, yeah. Do you, do you think forty thousand will cover the additional stuff that's not on there?
Yeah, because when we were talking with all the camera, he was like very nonchalant about the camera. Wendy and I were thinking this is gonna be the most expensive part of the thing. He's like, no, that's gonna be your most expensive part. The camera's cheap. Um, because they're gonna be running wires and stuff anyways, so it's just hanging another wire. Um, and then the camera itself, so I think forty thousand is gonna do us just fine for a while. It's, you know, not to exceed cost of fifty just to make it safe. And then again, we're using the CARES money, CARES money's there. Um, and this one's definitely gonna qualify for it, you know, so. And this has been something that's been on the radar for a long time. Last time that we did it and I approached council with the figure, when we didn't have this money, it was kind of a pullback a little bit, like whoa, that's kind of expensive. And the fire department's going to basically pay for the video portion of it because we're utilizing that more so than anybody. Um, but the audio, we would have no use for it. The audio is a very important thing for things like this, so.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the purchase of new audio visual equipment through CARES funding not to exceed fifty thousand.
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Hi.
Kirby?
Yes.
Nicole, right, now I, motion passes for zero.
So I got.
Um, Jeremy, applicants?
I have three sitting on the desk right now. I'd like more, so if anybody wants to join the fire department.
I'll work.
Always looking, so.
Thank you. Speaking of the CARES funding, um, are we going to, how does that work? Is it, Tom, is it donated to us, ten percent to the county and it comes back to our EDA?
If you don't spend the money, you have the ability of donating ten percent of the money to the county and.
And then it comes back to your EDA, right?
Well, we have them requested. It's, it's kind of like the county granting the money back to us.
So, so the county, from, this is my understanding of it through, uh, bigger Minnesota cities and the way that the counties started to do their whole program. Um, so they got a big chunk of money as well, um, much larger than us. Um, right now, they're not soliciting money from the cities at this point because after that November fifteenth deadline, all of our money magically disappears and goes into their pot. So to donate money that they're probably gonna eventually get anyways, because it's gonna be kind of tough here and this is short-term time. Um, cities that are, um, a different statutory type city, Minneapolis, for example, um, they got a huge chunk of money. That's where it's more applicable to put that money in. So the county is donating ten percent. Their one's already into their EDA program, which works mostly with our EDA programs and all the other EDA programs in the county, is my understanding. And basically our EDA just has to develop an application and you have to have expenditures. It's just not, which I think we have already have a couple, so. Last thing on my CARES Act funding is, uh, once you start bringing it into it, it's confusing.
Well, I tried watching one of those videos of Cleveland sort of cities, and it was, it was like chasing tails, so.
And if you watch one Monday, a lot of two days later.
They're changing.
Yeah, so when this, this money first dropped in May and was looking like it was gonna be next to impossible to spend. And there was a lot of repercussions to federal level saying, you gave us this big chunk of money, we're not gonna do anything with it. Um, so then they started changing things and changing things more and changing things more. Um, and like Wendy said, every day, something's changing.
I just wouldn't want us to lose any of that money. And then if, if we didn't spend all of it, I mean, I, I would like to see us get that back, especially if we get it back for the EDA, just if we weren't gonna use it all. But I mean, if you're gonna use it all, I mean.
So it, it can't go for the EDA. You have to have expenditures already. So because the EDA, um, paid off the liquor license for ugly bar, let's say, that they, so you have to have reversals essentially. So you can't just take it and then that EDA money just goes into the EDA general account. That's not the purpose or the ability of CARES Act. Otherwise, we just keep the two hundred and forty-four thousand for the street project.
Yeah, I think, uh, I don't think we have to worry about Kevin's leaving any money on the table.
No, I don't think so.
I'm gonna try, so, uh, like I said, I mean, I don't think we're gonna spend all, I'll tell you the honest truth. Um, and if it goes back to the county, that's great because they're giving it back to the school districts too and stuff like that. So they have reimbursement processes, even if, for example, um, they have election reimbursement process right now as well, um, bringing election pay costs. We're just gonna use our CARES funding rather than go through another hoop for it. We're just gonna use the money on behalf of the valuable surplus of bucks worth of elections out there. So we're trying our hardest, but it's, it's more difficult than one would think to spend two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars on federal money for very specific reasons. Yep.
Alright, uh, Park and Red. So we have Park and Red meeting last week. Um, we have our red coming up, uh, October sixth, food truck events. We have four food trucks and, well, and then an additional like craft ceramic kind of truck coming out. So, um, that's October sixth. Our flags are here. Wayne's not here. I don't know if he's gonna try and do one. Jess had talked about possibly, but I'm not sure if he's out of that. Um, our soccer nets are here and the kids absolutely love them, so they're over at skate park. Um, community garden, we'll talk about that in November, see how things are going with it. The Lions Club is still willing to donate benches and trees, but we need to figure out where. We gave them a list of where we want benches, but we just don't know what kind of trees and where to put them. Um, sunflower field, I'm waiting for the gentleman to get back to me. He will be coming out this fall to determine the best location and if it is a feasible place to put a sunflower field out here. Uh, we need to order our holiday trophies, so we need authorization to spend up to a hundred dollars to get the trophies for the Christmas and Halloween decorating contests. So can I get a motion or that?
Still hold.
You made it, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Um, I will vote I and Nicole, right, Kirby?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Motion passes for zero to spend to get our trophies. Um, we're just kind of waiting to see what we're doing with our next event would be the process of sample. So Wayne and I told him to decide what it's gonna be.
When, uh, when the sunflower guy comes out, is he going to be, just he's just gonna come out and look at it? Or is he gonna stop at city hall and talk to them and?
I'm waiting for him just to get back to us. He's, um, got like multiple sunflower fields going on right now, so he's super busy. And he just said he would get in contact with us when, like, early fall, so that's, we'll come out.
And since we're just getting the flights of the Labor Day is so bitter, it's gonna be next, uh, October?
Yeah.
November eleventh?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Alright, planning and zoning.
Yeah, in front of you guys today, you have a magnetic development application for our homes. Um, it is for a design and setback, uh, very, oh, recommended to the F and D. So essentially they're looking to redesign the building that's already, um, approved. And then they're looking to reduce the setbacks from thirteen feet and seven and a half feet on the sides to seven and a half feet and, uh, five feet on the sides. Um, the planning commission did meet on this and they recommended a denial based upon they felt it might be setting precedents and that if, when they were not wanting to reduce setbacks, this notion was proposed. And so in front of you guys in the packet, we do have the, uh, building plans in the previous ones and for the proposed. Um, does show the free plan from two thousand and sixteen. But also there is a proposal for a resolution for approval or denial based upon the findings of the staff report or based upon the findings that you guys have for the two days ago on that application.
Well, I, I live in that community and the people I've talked to all favor a one-story, you know, the daylight basement that goes to these two-story monasteries all down the road. So you know what my goal's gonna be.
I was at the original public hearing and they only had one person attended. So, and once they got the understanding of exactly how it was gonna be done, I think that they were okay with it as well.
And do need to point out that the hundred and twenty days would come up on October sixth, so that you would have to have a decision by then if you don't make one today.
Any, any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-three in favor of giving our homes to variance.
I'll second. Is there any discussion?
I don't think that doing the opposite of what our planning and zoning commission is a good precedence on our side to set. I talked to several of the planning and zoning commissioners, one of which didn't care what we did one way or the other. They could've gone either way on it. One that was very strongly for allowing it to happen, even though they didn't vote for it. And another one who was very strongly against it because they've already changed their layouts before. They don't wanna set that precedence like they said in the minutes too, so. As much as they say that it would help them out and that the houses would sell better, I, I have to trust that five people on the planning and zoning that we put there is, you know, we have to trust what they say. That's my thought.
Well, in, in reality, it's really only four, isn't it? Because if you just say one of them is okay with it.
One could go either way, you know, and it's four, so.
Yep.
And they all voted, all five of them, whether or not they voted that way, they all voted to deny it, so. And I encourage that person that they should just, you know, vote how they feel anyway, but.
I under-, I understand where you're coming from, Kirby, but, um, Tom, like you said, he lives out in the neighborhood. He's talking to the residents that live out there and it kind of goes back to the same thing. And, you know, we're looking at what the residents' feelings are on Emerson and Second, opening that up. So, I mean, it's, it's your guys' development and it's the precedence of that area. It's not really any other area. Am I correct on that, Wayne?
Correct.
Well, when I read the minutes, it seemed like the concern was that if you, if you give a variance here, then everybody's gonna expect a variance and that's not how it works, you know?
That is not the case. In fact, uh, because every single variance or amendment that you have is going to be each step of the report. Each of the parcels are unique in a certain way. Each of the findings of the reports unique in its way. So it's not gonna set any precedent if you, would you give this or deny it or not.
Yeah, I don't know what it costs for the establishment. It'd be, it's gotta be tens of thousands of dollars. Um, and I think, I think, you know, because our homes is an important developer in our community, I think, you know, giving them a little favor every once in a while is a good thing to do, so.
And like we had mentioned before, um, our homes is also, we have that park that's lined up in Forest Creek that we need our homes to help us with, so, um, in getting, you know, everything rated out there, so.
And to side walk. They committed to putting a sidewalk in for us.
Yeah, yeah, and like you said, we gotta take what the, what the residents are, you know, wanting. And if they're okay with it, you know, the way that we originally have it, then that's kind of what we need to do.
You mean the way that they wanna change it to?
They're approving if you, going against.
Yes, changing what they're, yes.
Approving their, it's basically.
What I'm saying, twenty sixteen, so. Alright, so we have a motion. You have a second with discussion. Alright, um, and we will go ahead and vote now. Vote I and Nicole. Alright, Tom?
Hi.
Kirby?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes for zero.
Uh, the next thing on the agenda was a deferment development for you for parking for, uh, Cool Job spotted this. Uh, one of the Nelson Boulevard. This is essentially an agreement between the owner and the city um, for the deferment of six parking spots. Uh, the language requirements would be for twelve parking spots with a handicap spot. Essentially what this does is just make sure that in the future, if the city feels like there's a need for the twelve parking spots, then the applicant would be legally binding to actually building the parking spots essentially.
So it's an open-ended deal, so if the city determines that they don't need more than six spots, it can go on and on.
I believe that by.
I think it's a two-year agreement.
Two-year agreement, actually, facility agreement. So those two years, he has said that he would actually go and go over, complete the parking as required. This should just be a deferment for the two years.
I should still my glasses, but I can't conceal them.
And, uh, anytime in two years if the city did decide that the parking or the business abuse there needed to have more parking spots, then they can go forward with the agreement as it is in here.
And this was brought before the planning zoning also, and they did agree to it, so.
And then this would just require you guys to enter into the agreement and then he would have to sign it as well.
I'll make a motion to enter into the parking lot deferment agreement with Cool Job. We agree.
I'll second that. I mean, Nicole, alright, Tom?
Hi.
Kirby?
Yes.
I'll vote I, motion passes for zero.
Uh, the last thing that I had was an update to the city, um, regarding the old Casey's. Uh, just been in contact with the owner regarding what he's gonna need to go for it, which would be the rezoning. And then he, and I provided him details of what he's gonna need as far as, um, a survey and how he's going to place the farm implements that he wants to stay on the property. And so he's aware of this. He says that he's been working on it. I don't know when that will be. Um, but he said he's very interested in trying to get forward that and then possibly with the EDA. Uh, the other development was the preserve, in which case the former development has, um, higher than it. um, hired an engineering firm, and they are working with the Minnesota DNR to figure out what the land management requirements may or may not be. Um, once they've come up with the site development, I do believe it is their purpose to come forward to the city with purchase agreement depending upon the state of the, of the water and infrastructure outside there. And so that's what their intentions are, um, I don't know the ground level on that either, um, so. And I believe they are working with.
Uh, Beth, Mr. Charles, that's the minute, Dan, um, do we have any idea what the cost to do that is gonna be?
It would just be the cost of the rezoning and then the cost of, I believe, an additional agreement or a cup. I don't know if that is off the top of my head or if he's that, unless you know.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Not positive.
Well, the next time we talk to him, Tom, we're, we're ready to meet with him anytime he wants to meet.
He's a hard man to get hold of.
Yeah.
He does wanna try to get hold of it.
Now, he doesn't have, he has a place on, uh?
He has a place out in, on, uh?
Dassel?
Maybe around there that he sells, uh, equipment like that.
Yeah, I remember, Kito does that.
Westside, I'm not sure where it's at.
Okay.
I believe his intention was is that he had a small sales office there and then he would place the equipment out front for sale, but then he wanted to get another tenant of the building, um, to, for whatever purpose it is. There is obviously, um, conditions on property due to the old Casey's, so there's some things that you can't do.
He can't sell donuts or anything.
He can't sell ashtrays.
Or tea.
Tom, I'm not sure of the extent of the conditions on it, he did say he was able to get something to Casey's.
Okay. Now, if there was a, does that have, that has, does that go cold drink, the ride stores? Just run the back, I don't remember.
No.
So he has no ability to bring anything into the building?
Nothing.
If it doesn't fit through the front door, right?
Window?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Jerry?
And then I have my final question.
Eric, good evening, Mayor Council. And in your packet this evening are the bid results from the twenty twenty payment, um, improvements project. We received bids last week Tuesday, uh, six bids were received, so it was a good turnout on the bids. We're recommending that Council order the project to Knife River Corporation of Socrapids and demand one hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents. Uh, there is a resolution in your packet this evening, and then in addition to that for, for Council consideration, uh, I know that, um, as staff, uh, we've discussed the condition of the City Hall parking lot, and I know that a few of you have talked to me individually about that as well. I guess it would be an opportunity since the bids they're coming below significantly below where we anticipated them, and the need for the improvements to the City Hall parking lot is there, uh, there would be an opportunity to have a discussion with the contractor as to whether or not that parking lot could be added to the contract, uh, by a change order. So I did speak with the contractor today, uh, they're anticipating that sometime next week they'll get started with curb replacements, petunias patches, things of that nature. Uh, so certainly wanted to bring it up as an option to Council for your consideration. That is not included in the resolution this evening, uh, however, it, it could be added to the project by change order, which you would see at an upcoming council meeting after the work is completed, so.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-four.
I'll second.
Kirby?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Alright, I vote I, motion passes forward to zero.
So Mayor Council, should I plan on bringing a change order to you for the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the parking lot's pretty bad.
Um, as long as we have Jared here, I did ask him a question maybe before, um, we have a couple issues still around with the regional park, just so that you guys are aware. Um, and Wayne and Justin are actually looking at any possible retaining wall or other property owners, um, that brought up to the regional park, so I just wanted you guys to know that cause the engine is, are looking at that. It will be an expense to, I must say, EDA. I think Justin is going to reach out to a couple landscapers that do retain walls and get some kids.
The grounds are roving away, right?
Yes, big time.
Yeah, there's, there's giant holes in the fence.
The fencing right along, um, the west side, what it's low is, they've got huge, huge holes. So Justin and Wayne were out there in touch with property owners and they only had a wall, so just so you guys are aware of that, it's not gonna be coming out to us.
It's gonna be a block wall or?
Mm-hmm, I believe so, and it's X C C B, what we're looking at, so. Alright, Tom?
Well, we can put that to bed.
Something like that. Uh, go ahead, Tom.
Okay, EDA, uh, we had a meeting back, uh, August twenty-fifth and, uh, we discussed several things, uh, I, I was looking for something I could hand out to potential, uh, businesses that are about to come into the Moncler's area, so I kind of threw together a flyer, I'm looking at them, all of you have in your packet, um, they're not pulled up, I see, I see what it is. One of mine made thrusts here for EDA's, they had an Albee's in town, and, uh, I'm working with Jolene Foss, who's the Red Company, not the partnership, uh, director, and, uh, since she was instrumental in getting the wealth of the Albee's up in Princeton, she sent me the information on all of the Albee's compartments, what they require in terms of traffic flow, uh, space, um, you know, uh, one thing's gonna be traffic length if they decide, if we get them, they decide to build in that area in front of craft pattern, it'll be a traffic light and stuff. So, I don't know how much pull Albee's has to get that done, but, uh, that would be one of the requirements, or we put it to find another place. So, uh, Deb sent the information that Dan, so Dan and I and Jolene will be working together to get kind of a ball rolling and then the rest of the EDA will kind of help push that. The, their corporate headquarters is at Cape Hill, Illinois, and they have a, uh, facility in, uh, um, is it V-Bolt? Need, what do you think, Fairbowl? I'm not familiar with those calls, Fairbowl, Fairbowl, is that something?
Fairbowl.
Fairbowl, okay, yeah. That, that's where their regional, Minnesota regional offices are, so between the two of them, we'd be working, so. I have high hopes for this, so hopefully we can get support from the community, I think, uh, I think a lot of the higher people feel, I think it'll be a grocery store, you know, so. The next meeting is not going to be September fifth, uh, it's going to be in October, I don't have the date from there right now, um, fifteenth, it's gonna be in October twentieth, I believe, yeah, so. But that's kind of where we are.
So with that, you said in front of that pattern, right?
Well, that's what I was thinking, based on the, the amount of room they need, that area fits their criteria very well, and I figured from, uh, traffic, access and all that stuff, you know, it'd be, it'd be pretty good, but I said they require a traffic light for access to that main, main road, so. We have, we have to work with them about it, cause I know that'd be too close to the other light.
Yeah.
Well, one of their things that they had said why we couldn't put one there was because there wasn't enough traffic on that road, right? They wouldn't put a traffic control there, there wouldn't be enough traffic, a store there that's going to be constant traffic.
The other thing that MinDOT is currently doing too is if you wanna put a traffic light or new access point in, they're making a requirement to delete two or three other access points within your jurisdiction. So they, they may suggest, hey, you want traffic light there, okay, um, but you're gonna have to close Arizona and you're gonna have to close something else, basically, so it's not passing. So.
Yeah.
Be, be careful what you wish with MinDOT sometimes.
Well, the other thing Albee requires is twenty-two thousand car per day traffic flow, so, uh, I looked at A U A R and I think that was projected for, um, twenty thirty or something like that, so I really don't know where we're at now. I would think that they did a study on, uh, US twelve before they started the, you know, reconstruction project, they would have to have some traffic flow information. I spent probably three hours online trying to find something, and there's all kinds of word graphs that I couldn't make heads or tails out of unless you're a traffic person. Jared, do you have any idea where we go for that?
Yeah, I can provide that to you.
Well, you can?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in that space though, they need twenty-two thousand square feet with a ninety-five, that, that needed ninety-five parking space, is that not wrong with anything?
I think it's, uh, it's, uh, it's close to four acres, and they need three and a half acres, basically. So we're, we're right at that, the other place would be business park, that's kind of where you're out there. I don't know, that would work too, cause they got, you know, you, you have to put a traffic light probably at Clemente. We may, we may have better luck getting a traffic light at Clemente and get a little bit tougher.
Right, and if progress goes off to the third, you know, they got all that out there too.
Yeah.
So.
So maybe, maybe we should push and plug that.
I know with MinDOT's long-term plans, that's scheduled for a round of all. And changing MinDOT's plans next to possible.
Where's scheduled for a round of all?
I would call it Clemente, Clemente twelve.
What?
That's been in their long-term plans since Crown Wolf's first king. Problem is it's such an expensive thing and there's not enough traffic yet on Clemente.
Says quote, two thousand five.
Well, can I, if we can get an Albee's out there, I'll stand out there and direct traffic. Okay, that's it for me.
Alright, new business, we don't have any old business, so new business, um, I guess it's Wendy.
I'm not, actually it's Heidi.
Oh, Heidi!
In your packet you do have, um, an estimate from Creative Builders for us to forward with our, um, Caris app money, um, for updating the front office as far as the window goes and the counter. Um, through this whole process, I contacted over seventeen different contractors to come in and did this out for us, and I only received one bid back. Um, I contacted people everywhere from, uh, Dalla, Warrington, Annadale, Hutchinson, Union Valley, um, Long Lake, Winston, Buffalo, um, and they were not interested in coming out and getting the job or they were too busy. So unfortunately, this is the only bid we have to go on, and, um, basically it, it, the scope of the work that's there, we were, are, we will be with front counter cabinet and glass, um, installing a beauty cabinet with file storage below, uh, installing, uh, two recessed lights over the counter, uh, quartz countertops, uh, thirty-six by forty-eight bullet resistant glass, uh, and a pull-down shade so that our, um, our security system will continue to work. And, uh, caving off the drinking fountain that is there that is not being used and we will utilize, um, the countertop will go down, um, further into the area where the drinking fountain is and provide additional space for people when they do come in, um, to write on or fill out paperwork and, and everything, it'd be just easier flow, um, front, right now we have no counter space for people to work or do anything when they do come in to submit permits or payments or anything else. Um, and then it would also in detail painting the lobby as well as, um, touching up some, um, paint on the inside and the office portion, and that's at the grand total of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Have they given you any drawings or anything, how this is gonna work?
They have not. Um, I, we really didn't know what, um, exactly we wanted, we told them, we came in and measured. I'm sure once we say we would like to move forward, he would give us more specific drawings or we would have a better, you know, idea of what is going on. Nothing is really, the window isn't going to get any bigger, um, at the most, if the window will, the last portion of it will come back so that there is a bigger space to write on, um, and conduct business, as well as then the countertop that will go along the outside and over to where the drinking from.
So they're gonna leave like a bank slot in there?
Yeah.
Is this kind of similar to what you guys wanted to do a few years ago, Wendy?
Yeah, and I'm guessing out of this twenty-two thousand five hundred, a big part of it is the bulletproof, bulletproof glass.
Is this the same company, do you remember, or?
No, I, I don't know, never, I don't know who these people are. We had never really looked into having it done before, we looked into changing the glass, and at that time the cost to do bullet resistant and bulletproof was pretty expensive back probably five, six, seven years ago already. So I'm, I'm thinking a lot of this is probably the glass and the countertop with the cutout in it. Um, they'll still put the drawers there like we want, so a lot of that inside's not changing and they're gonna close in some of that by those file cabinets, I'll say. But the big part is like Heidi said, they'll extend the counter out further into the hallway, so because of that plexiglass there, there's no place, place to write. You know, before we had the window open and people could write there, but now we can't get, with the plexiglass up or close it off, and so there's no place to write, so this will extend it out a little ways, so just move the glass and.
And since this money has to be spent by fifteenth, uh, we probably need to get going on this.
Yeah, we only had one other company even show up and he called me and said he doesn't want, and I'm getting him.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not in favor of paying contractors in advance, but in this particular scenario, we may wind up doing that and, um.
Well, it's really tough too, that, but having a hard time getting lumbered.
Yeah.
And, and it's more expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Well, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Yeah, as long as there's Caris money, yes, we'll play. Alright, is there a motion then? Is that a motion, Tom?
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion to proceed with the, uh, front counter and front glass renovation.
Second.
Okay, and Tom?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
Nicole? I have one more, I, motion passes forward to zero.
Thank you. Heidi?
Okay, so before you use the preliminary, our proposed levy for twenty twenty-one, um, it is, um, one million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars, which is a six percent increase or seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars in more than twenty twenty. With the estimated increase in our tax capacity, um, we're estimating our tax rate to actually decrease by about two point seven percent, which means there should be little or no impact on the twenty twenty-one taxes for the residents. This is proposed, it's not a final levy, um, you'll have the opportunity to review the proposed levy prior to submitting of the final levy in December of twenty twenty. Couple things it includes is the police protection, which is ten hours a day, at eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents an hour. Um, our legal services, we did budget in there for the City Hall park, not at eight thousand, but if we do it this year, we can use that money then to go back to new street, um, other street repairs, our seal coating and stuff. Um, our payment for, for our cloud truck, we need to put in a new server at City Hall because ours is, um, outdated, the area going to, it's starting in twenty twenty-two, there will no longer be, um, any warranty, well, it's actually out of warranty already, but they will not be, um, servicing or using the Windows ten or whatever on that server, nobody will stand united anymore, so we need to operate it. And then it's also putting four hundred and some thousand, four hundred and sixteen thousand into our capital improvement for future street repairs and improvements. So, um, I just have a couple things, and then this is what we went over in the workshop. So if anybody has any questions, I can answer your questions, if not, I just ask that you, um, approve the proposed levy, budget levy, or not? um, approve the proposed levy, budget levy, or not?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the proposed levy for the City of Montrose for twenty twenty-one.
I'll second. Um, I'll vote aye and nay, or Kirby?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Motion passes, four zero.
Okay, the next item then is, um, the next page after that, it just shows our, our bonds that we are paying on right now, some of them are through the levy, um, the two thousand, let's see, it's two thousand seventeen A, the two thousand twelve B, and the two thousand ten A are paid with the levy. We are actually, um, one of them is staying the same, two of them we can actually decrease the amount of what, so when you take out the bond, um, and you have a levy, that in the, in the report itself, it shows what, she would levy every year for that bond payment, because we did, um, we funded those bonds a couple of years ago to lower the interest rate when the interest came down and everything, we've been able to save up enough money that we can now start lowering those payments, or not lowering the payments, but lowering the amount of the levy to make those payments, because we have some cash on hand to make the payments with. So there's Resolution number twenty twenty-one, which is a resolution authorizing a decrease of the levy from the crossover bond of twenty ten A, um, and it's, we have reserve funds to use for the annual payments, I need a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty dash twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one.
I'll second.
Alright, and Tom?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
I'll vote aye and nay, alright, motion passes, four zero.
And the second resolution is, a resolution to decrease the levy for the, um, Geo Street Reconstruction Bond of twenty seventeen A, and that was because our interest rate, um, is lower than what was anticipated, that is the one from that Montrose Meadows project where we added on, it's not the Garfield, but the Montrose Meadows Street, where we took out a small loan just to pay for those, that improvement, that's kind of, to fix that street, I should say, um, so we can decrease that by thirteen hundred and eighty-nine because there again, our interest came in lower than what was originally anticipated.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two.
I'll second. Hey, Kirby?
Yes.
I'll vote aye and nay, Tom?
Aye.
Motion passes, four zero. And we're coming into the upcoming meetings, which is EDA, it's not...
It's October, EDA.
Yeah, you guys just...
Because, well, we were, we, we waited on the last meeting, so it was a meeting, so...
Alright, City Council Workshop is September twenty-eighth, are we going ahead with that? We cancel that?
Should we cancel, I have nothing more, does anybody have anything for it?
I have none. Alright, we'll have to cancel that one. Um, Park and Rec, we are meeting though October first, which will be right before our next event. Next council meeting is October twelfth, and Planning and Zoning will meet on the fourteenth of October, EDA will then meet on the twentieth, City Council Workshop is twenty-sixth of October, and of course, the elections on the third. Um, acknowledgements, I just have a couple for Kevin, Wendy, and Heidi, who are working so nicely on this care responding, and Kevin for spending some, some money there.
One more.
Um, as well as the fire, fire department that Kevin mentioned, they're very busy, we thank them for everything that they do, so, um, and then the new cafe, and for the coffee shop that's opening up, um, people please, maybe alter it. We're not comfortable here, but it's a cute place, so, so, yeah.
Uh, along with the fire department stuff, I just want to thank them for sitting out on Highway twelve all day for nine eleven.
Well, I'd like to acknowledge the residents that turned out tonight, it's nice to see people sitting out there.
Did you guys have any questions or anything before we adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Alright, you want a paper?
Aye, yes.
Alright, Sandra?
I, I don't, Wayne's not here, so he's, he's like, he's...
Here's the book. Yeah, well, this is...